I'd like to call this an originally scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and at this time we're going to ask Commissioner Tudor Yulhorn to lead us in an invocation.
Would you please join me in prayer? Almighty God, you are our Creator and our Sustainer. You are our light and our fortress. You are our wisdom and our strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our task on behalf of our entire community with wisdom, and may we all approach one another with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day. All these things we ask in your powerful name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody. We're glad to have all of you here. Thank you for joining us in our meeting tonight. First item on the agenda is our Board of Recognitions. I ask for Rex Warren to come forward and want to present him with a certificate. He is joining our Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board, and Rex brings some very special talents to our Convention and Visitors Bureau. Now resident of Harlingen, but before that he was Chief Officer for Starwood Hotels, a big worldwide chain, and also now faculty of...
Johnson, Lenz, or something.
Johnson, Wales University, specializing in hospitality management. Rex is going to make us work on this Convention and Visitors Bureau stuff, and I think he's got, brings a lot of energy and a lot of know-how and a lot of expertise to this board. Something really unusual that we wouldn't otherwise have, but just because of being married well. He married well, and she's a Harlingen girl, so we're delighted to have you guys back in town and want to recognize you. Thank you for offering to serve.
Thank you very much.
Honored to do so. I think Harlingen's going to take a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Item two is the presentation of discussion regarding the Texas National Guard Operation Crackdown Program.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager. Once again, the National Guard is going to be here at the end of this month. Tentatively, we're looking at August 20th through the 31st for our Operation Crackdown, which is, excuse me, where the National Guard together with the city comes in and to demolish vacant or abandoned houses that have been a nuisance in the city. This is the seventh year we participate, or they participate with us. On the map here, we can see just the general location of the structures that we're going to be working on. We are looking at August 23rd for our media day. The address located is going to be, or the address that we've picked for this media day will be 513 West Monroe. We expect to have media there. We expect to have some kids there, the school district. We're still finalizing a lot of the details because it is the National Guard and they kind of change. Like, we know they're coming, but we don't know all the exacts of the procedures. We're going to get those. But we wanted to let the commission know and the public know that they are coming because they won't actually get here until the 20th, and we won't have a exit commission until then. This are what we've done in the past years. The addresses from 2015, 16, from 2017 they came first, and so we have a list of addresses and the totals of what they do. And thus far, in the last six events that we have had, we have a total of 182 homes that have been demolished, and we're hoping to add to that about another 23 plus or minus once we get the numbers this year.
Great work.
Can answer any questions?
See if I have any questions.
Again, this is just for information.
Really, this is a, anybody have any questions? No. This is a really great program for our city as it eliminates blinded structures and houses that in many instances are right across the street from our elementary schools, where you see gang and drug activity, and by eliminating these structures, we improve the safety of our neighborhoods, and that's what this program is all about. And we're really fortunate to have a great partnership with the Texas National Guard, who have come here the last six years.
Six years.
Should be number seven.
Yes, we do.
And we'll go over the 200 farm structures that have been eliminated and improved, and it tends to improve the rest of the neighborhood when this happens as well. So, great work. Thank you all for continuing this program with the National Guard.
Yes, sir.
Item three is presentation of recognition plaques to the sponsors of the third annual Monica and Maggie's House IBCA BBQ cook-off by the Harlingen Police Department Executive Staff. Chief, tell us about the great event that you all put on.
I'm very excited. It's our second year to host, and we're here tonight to give away some money to a very good stakeholder in our community that works with the police department, Cameron County, on a daily basis. And I want to recognize, I want to call up our sponsors up to the front here. Orlando, as I called them out, if you would come up, Orlando will get you situated up here for presentation of the check. And each of them have received a plaque. We're going to start off with Bass Pro Shops, Bogus Ford Harlingen, Briggs Equipment, Charlie Clark Nissan, Duke Energy, Exceptional Emergency Center, George Cunningham Central Air and Heating, Martin Via Franca LLC, Palms Behavioral, Residence Inn by Marriott, Apex Cameron County Wind Farms, PCL Construction, and Mayor, if we could, ask you to represent the city as a sponsor. If I could get the Director of Monica and Maggie's House and Cameron County Children's Advocacy Centers, Ana De La Cruz, to join me up here with her staff. I'm going to turn the mic over to Ana here just to say a few words, but I'll follow up, and just, we exceeded last year's amount to give away, and I'm going to turn it over to Ana here just to make a few comments, introduce her board and staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Mayor, and citizens of Harlingen. On behalf of the Cameron County Children's Advocacy Center, also known as Maggie and Monica's House, we are extremely honored to be here this evening. We have been collaborating with Harlingen Police Department for two years on this particular event. The last two years, I have seen it grow. I was super amazed with the amount of work and energy that Harlingen Police Department puts into this effort. Without them, without their support, and without the support of community members and sponsors, we would not be in existence. As a nonprofit, we have been open for 20 years. 20 years is a long time, and so we hope to be in Cameron County, serving children in Cameron and Williston County another 20, 25, 30 years. So again, it is definitely with huge honor and pleasure that we're here this evening. I'd like to take a minute to introduce some of the staff members that are here. Unfortunately, none of the board members were able to make it, but I do have Monica Galvan Castillo, and she has been with our agency for 10 years as a forensic interviewer in San Marino. Mr. Edward Flores, he actually is in charge of a special program that we initiated about two, three years ago. And unfortunately, the reason that the program started was because we would see a lot of these cases that were falling through the cracks, and so we wanted to make sure that every child where there was an incident of abuse and there was a report was actually seen at our agency. Then I have Mr. Gabriel Garcia, who is our Community Outreach Coordinator, and I have Ella, and I can't remember Ella's last name. She's been with us for a year and a half, okay? And she's an intern, and she's getting ready to leave us. Next week, she's going to UTSA. But she came to us right after her high school, a year and a half ago, so we'll be sad to see her leave. And then we have Crystal Martinez, who I'm very proud of. She is our therapist in Brownsville and is a therapist intern, and hopefully she'll be done and fully certified as a therapist in a few months. So again, I thank you, I thank sponsors, I thank community, I thank Harlingen Police Department for all of their work and their efforts. Thank you.
As we present the check, I just want to say that us coming to the commission meetings and providing contributions back into the community from the police department, January is hard to believe, I've been here four years, and I'm most proud that this has become a policing philosophy and a way we do business. This is not a special event. This is community policing at its best, and I'm very proud of the men and women that contributed from the Harlingen Police Department, as well as our sponsors and city sponsors, recognizing Selena Gonzalez from Public Works, Javier Mendez from Parks, Eddie from the golf course, our Fire Chief, Chief Rubio. This is a city effort as well as a police department effort, so thank you all, and we'll present you to hear the check.
This year, it's going to be $8,000. Wow. Thank you guys. Thank you all for your...
Yeah, we can take that. You just lean it back there.
that, especially our city staff, our police department, and all the sponsors. So, item four is the presentation by the Harlingen National Bronco League, recognizing the Harlingen National Bronco Shoveling For You All-Stars Baseball Team for second-place finish in the Pony World Series Tournament held in Deer Park, Houston, Texas on July 15, 2018. Javier.
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioner. We have Jerry Hernandez, who represents the Harlingen National Bronco League, and they run out, they run their league out of the Wilson Sports Complex, and they're very proud, and we're very proud that they were able to make it to the World Series, and then, of course, make it to number two at the World Series. And so, I want to bring them up, maybe we can take a photo with you, Mayor, and City Commission, if y'all would like. And we want to recognize, of course, the head coach, which is Jerry Hernandez, the assistant coach, José Galvan, Marty Vargas, and Bob Banda, and especially the 11 kids that participated or members of the team, which was Trey Rengones, Ashley Galvan, Ryan Ruiz, Zoe Granados, Owen Vargas, George Andrade, RJ Banda, Wyatt Vasquez, Sebastian Sosa, Aubrey Marroquín, and Camilia Rodríguez. I'd like to invite Jerry up, maybe he has a few words to share as well, how they came along and how they got to participate in the World Series.
They actually got a ring?
Yes, they did.
That is really, really neat.
Yeah.
We're actually super proud of this team. We started to, how can I put it? It was a late start for this team, and we actually came together when we needed them to come together. We went with nine kids, a couple of kids had stuff to do, they couldn't make it, so we went with nine kids. We didn't think we were going to get this far, so I got to give them 100% credit. They played Ironman Ball, you know, nine kids on the field, and they played their hearts out. You know, we ended up second, one game short from the championship, so we're super proud, super proud of these kids. They worked really hard. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of the players and all of the coaches, and especially all of the parents for supporting youth baseball, Pony League Baseball in our community. I know it's a labor of love, but you all really have put in a lot of time to do this. We congratulate you, and thank you for representing the city of Harlingen all the way up there in Houston and representing them so well. I think it's fitting that we have former Mayor Whittington here in the audience tonight, who is, who I think was a member of the Little League World, in the Little League World Series team about 100 years ago.
At least.
Did you all, did you win? Did y'all win?
No, we didn't win.
They were also the runner, they were also the runner-up, so...
Well, we got no hits.
Mayor, I think it'd be cool to get a picture of you and the team.
Okay. All right.
Can we do that?
Yeah, can we take a picture? We got the kids.
The commission wants to join us.
Yeah, I want to get it.
Everybody, get everybody.
One other thing, Mayor, this is the four and under group, so that's, that's a big, four and under.
I can carry some of them.
No.
Are you sure? I can take all of them. Oh, they are the way?
Congratulations.
That is so, you got a raise. Congratulations.
Wyatt's hiding.
Yeah, they all, you can't walk.
Trey and Wyatt are hiding.
Have them kneel down in the room.
Okay, put some on their knee.
Ryan, Ryan's not, he can get it back.
Move more to the middle. Trey, move, move this way, Trey. Aubrey, move a little bit more. George, move this way.
George, just get over, get closer to Aubrey.
Here we go, guys. One.
Big smiles.
Two, three. One more. Perfect.
Okay, that's great. So, item five is now the presentation by Parks and Recreation Department of Pony League, weather conditions for both actions.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners. What we want to do is bring the update on the golf course conditions to the City Commission and present to y'all. Just to let you all know, you know, it's, we, back in January, December, we started experiencing some, the greens were getting affected by, we believed by the cold weather, and so there was a lot of dead patches on several of the holes, and so what Eddie and the, his superintendent were trying to fertilize it and trying to get it back, and so, so over the months, what they did was they took two soil samples on holes two and nine, and they sent that soil sample to the University of Oklahoma, and they got it tested, and so what came back was the results of us having a high percentage of nematodes. And so, there's two type of nematodes, well, there's several types, but the two that we had was ring nematodes and the root knot nematodes, and so what they did was they started applying a chemical called Ademnify, and so that was showing positive results, and so we started seeing that the recovery was taking a little longer than what we thought, and so they took two more samples of the soil and they sent it off to the, I think I took that out, but there was, there's another university on turf diagnostics, and so what we found out that there was a fungicide in the, in the ground, and so we were applying a different type of application of fungicide to it, and so that's been helping recover the greens, and so they're looking really good. The staff is continuing to verti-cut, and so that's to help have the strands, I guess, of the turf grow out, and so they're continuing to do that and continuing to fertilize, and so if you go out there, you see some areas where we call it scalping, and it looks dry, it looks brown, but what's happening is that with all the fertilizer, the grass is growing so fast that when they're cutting it, it leaves that burn mark, but it recovers really quick, and so that's, that's normal. But as soon as we cut back on the fertilizing, we should get rid of that, those scalping. And so, over here on the right is just our schedule of when we're verticutting and when we're fertilizing. And so, these are just some photos. We took this one on the left, April 6th, and then the other one on, in July the 30th, and so you can see how we've, the greens have recovered quite a bit, and so that dead area is what we're talking about where the nematodes were coming through and eating away of the roots and so on, so. And then, of course, this is another hole, number three. This is hole number four. And of course, hole number five. And what I'm, I'm just showing the ones that we have significant damage to. And then hole number six, hole number nine, and then hole number 10.
Have you ever consulted with the Greenskeeper at the Harlingen Country Club, because I know they had similar issues about 18 months ago.
I know that...
And they brought in a consultant, too.
Yeah. I know that he visits with, and he shares a lot of this information, and with other golf directors, and so with McAllen, of course, with Harlingen Country Club and some other ones, and so they kind of share what's going on in the field.
Yeah, the industry as a whole, the superintendents get together and they compare notes and things like that. We were aware of Harlingen Country Club when they had their issues. There was a little bit different back then, but, you know, they've recovered well. The new superintendent started in, in April, and he's doing just a fantastic job, so, you know, we've really seen some, some big improvements.
That's a huge difference in just a few minutes.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're, we're excited about going into the, into the fall, and, you know...
Do these spread through the plates when they run from green to green?
They can, but we're a soft spike facility. In fact, 98% of golf courses now are all soft spike facilities. Even PGA Tour players, when they go and if they're using steel spikes, they have to actually get permission from the facility to use their steel spikes. So that's not necessarily an issue like it used to be years and years ago, because the spikes stay on the surface and not into the root systems.
Tudor said it looks really, really great.
Yeah, I mean, we still got, we still got a ways to go, but for complete and total recovery, but, you know, it's, in the, in the time that we've been going, it's a huge, huge difference.
And I read that you got some fertilizer donated?
Yes, sir. And also another thing I was going to mention, I didn't put it in here, but the, there's a local player, and he used to work with...
Used to be, his name is Jim Cambrow. He used to be a sales rep for Helena, it was a chemical company, and he just showed up one day with seven tons of, actually it was three and a half tons, and then a week later, they brought the other three and a half tons for fertilizing fairways and rots. So, it was very well qualified, so. He didn't want a big, a bunch of hoopla, and, you know, but we gave him as much recognition as we can, so it was very, very well.
One other thing that...
I want to make sure he got credit for that, that's why I'm bringing it up.
One other thing that we experienced, of course, with the, with the storm in June, was a lot of erosion, and so the staff has gone in and either barricaded some of the areas until we can get to it, but the critical areas, they have gone in, we brought some river rock in and then filled back in, backfilled it, so all the holes are open for play now, so.
Okay. Dramatic improvement, that's, that's good. Good work. Thank you all for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item six is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of July the 11, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? None, that's our motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Mayor. Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item seven, A through F, consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
So, second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item eight, consideration possible action to authorize the Harlingen Police Department to purchase unit trans equipment from InNet Innovation Network Technologies.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, the Harlingen Police Department would like to purchase unit trans equipment from Innovative Network Technologies through a lease agreement with Frost Bank. The total cost of the equipment is $80,531.65 per proposal 004168R3. Pricing is from State Cooperative Contract DIR TSO 2985. The Harlingen Police Department will lease the equipment through Frost Bank, as was approved by the City Commission on June 6, 2018. The terms of the lease are for five years at an annual cost of $17,442.04 for a five-year total of $87,610.20 plus $400 origination fee.
It's like a movie, Mayor, it's like a movie.
So, we, we have that, we have a budget, right?
Yes, we have.
Yes. Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is consideration possible action to authorize the Harlingen Police Department to auction off a total of 19 motor vehicles, two trailers, and one motorcycle using govdeals.com auction website.
The Harlingen Police Department would like to auction off 19 motor vehicles, two trailers, and one motorcycle using the govdeals auction website. The vehicles and trailers have been removed from service.
Motion carries. Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right, thank you. Item 10 is consideration possible action to accept or reject bids in a work contract for the CDPG Street Improvement Orla Project.
Good evening.
Couldn't get the bigger print.
I have them right here.
Okay, it is right here.
Good evening. On July 2nd, staff received an open total of five bids for the Buchanan Street Improvement Project through CDPG from Commerce to A Street. Attaches the big tabulation for review along with the summary of each bid's middle. Staff has reviewed the bids, and any items not received at the time of bids from RTH have since been received, and we are recommending to award the contract to RTH in the amount of $320,000. Thank you.
Good evening.
Couldn't get the bigger print.
I have them right here.
On July 2nd, staff received an opening total of five bids for the Buchanan Street Improvement Project to CDBG from Commerce to A Street. Attaches the big tabulation for review along with the summary of each bid, bids of middle. Staff has reviewed the bids and any items not received at the time of bids from RDH have since been received. And we are recommending to award the contract to RDH in the amount of $324,290. Staff recommends approve.
Sir, I, I think I asked the last, last time this one came up, do you have a, I don't know what to call it, I guess, a safeguard on, or as far as any kind of change orders or do you have a, do you have a budget for any overruns?
It's actually, the, the bid amount is, allows us what's budgeted, and we do have a cushion for any.
Cushion for?
Yes, for any change orders that might arise. And we try to take, we try to give them to a minimum.
Right.
Or decrease the project, but yes, we do.
Yeah, because I guess, anyone, if it's, you know, $325,000 and they turn it to $400,000.
Yes, we do have a, a extra amount for that project.
Okay. Have we done work with RDH before? Have you checked their references?
We checked all the references. RDH doesn't don't work in the city of Harlingen, but they don't work in other cities, particularly that I used to work at, and I don't work with them.
Okay.
Our references came out okay.
They're located in?
I believe they're in Mission area.
I would take it for granted that we've already, you know, they, they have bonds and everything else. I mean, it's not like.
Correct. Once we go through the award process and we'll, we'll request a performance payment bonds, and before we execute the contracts.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item 11, consideration possible action to approve advertising agreement with Rio Shelters and authorize City Manager to execute the agreement for implementing print advertising services at the Tony Butler Golf Course. I'm going to pass the gavel at this time to Commissioner Lee Al, Senior Commissioner, and I'm going to step out.
Yeah, we might do it.
Yeah.
You're on.
So, we got a, a draft of agreement to allow Rio Shelters to provide the advertising on our facilities at Tony Butler. And it's just another source of revenue that we're trying to, to produce for the golf course. And so, the agreement is for two years. And with those, for, for now, they'll be advertising on all our tee boxes, on their benches, but they have the option to advertise on the golf carts and on our pin flags. The, on the terms, they, they will be responsible for collecting and soliciting all the vendors they'll be using for advertising, and they'll be paying the city 15% of the gross revenues. And there is a, a termination clause in there that we can terminate 30 days advance notice. So, there is a termination clause, and then, of course, they're going to provide insurance.
And they'll be responsible for providing the benches at every, all 27 holes and maintaining those as well. And they'll have 30 days to respond to a request for maintenance repairs or replacements.
Do we have a standard rate, or are they going to be negotiating that rate for each?
They're going to negotiate all the rates, and they're going to negotiate all the deals with the.
Individual vendors. Then we keep the 15%.
We're going to keep 15%, and we'll base that on their actual records. So, we're going to stay on top of that.
So, the terminations, if they can terminate and with a 30-day notice, what about us? For whatever reason, we decide we need to terminate?
Yes, it's a mutual termination clause, so we could give, either party could give that 30-day notice.
Okay.
It's just another source of revenue for the golf course. We need it.
We need it. I think the motion would approve. Second. Oh, I can't vote anyway. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you want? Oh, he's gone. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I thought you just stepped out for this one. Okay, board appointments. Do we have any board appointments?
None.
I have a couple. For Harlingen Pride Advisory Board, I have Eva Chips. And then, I'm going to be reappointing Jerry Rounds for the Harlingen Pride Advisory Board. And for the other Harlingen Pride Advisory Board, Alma Tesera. And for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, I'll be reappointing Eva Chips. And for the zoning board of adjustments, it would be Rudy Martinez. And for the construction board of adjustments and appeals, Ernesto Flores will be reappointed. Those are the ones that I have.
And I have two. I have three appointments. Sonia Casas for the Community Development Advisory Board, and Eduardo Sanchez to the Parks Advisory Board.
I need to go back. I need, I have one more to the Veterans Advisory Board, Rodrigo Rodriguez. Do you have any of them?
Have a motion? Second. Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And the mayor is back.
That was city business, by the way.
As far as we know.
What did?
We went through the 13th executive session.
Okay. So, item 13 is executive session on the following items, attorney-client consultation pursuant to 551.071, on a matter of which duty of the attorney to government body of Texas Department of Special Conduct. I should have stayed out a little bit longer, ladies and gentlemen. The state bar of Texas, very complex in this chapter, Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, regarding the person exchange lease or value of real property. If deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city of Harlingen in negotiations with their person and Texas Government Code, Section 551.0871, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or national information the city has received, business prospect, government body seeks to have located state or expand in or near the city and with which the city is engaging economic development negotiations related to the operation of the University Articulation Center and Career Center, and B pursuant to the same sections and 087, 071, and 072 regarding project development, and C regarding real property for transit terminal expansion. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the City Commissioner is going to go meet with his attorney in executive session in the conference room, and we will be back. And there could be items, there are three potential action items. So, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are out of executive session at 7:01 PM. We're going to go to item 14, consideration and possible action to authorize the City Manager to proceed as discussed in executive session on the University Articulation and Career Center.
Mayor, Commissioner, you have, you used to have a copy of a lease between TSDC and UTRGB for utilization of the University Center? And staff is recommending approval consenting to the lease?
I'd make the motion that we consent to the lease.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like sign, motion carries. Will be no, we'll pass items 15 and 16, no actions. We'll take it on those at this time. And item 17, since the communication there. She's on vacation, so that's good. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.